Buenos días a todos. Gracias por estar aquí para nuestra reunión regular del 2 de agosto de 2016. Ray, has estado ocupado. Lo aprecio que estés aquí. Estoy seguro que has tenido un buen tiempo. Esperamos escucharlo en la agenda más tarde. Claro de color.
Presidente. Comisionado Omero.
Presidente.
Comisionado O'Donnell.
Presente.
Tenemos una corona. Así que les pido a todos que se senten ante el juramento. Le pido al reverendo Eliseo Sanz Jan que venga por favor para darle la bendición a nuestra comunidad. Esto se presentará tanto en su idioma natal como su esposa lo interpretará después. Así que esto será una bendición especial. Es del Asamblea Apostólica de la Faith en Jesús Cristo.
Buenos días a todos.
Buenos días.
Es un honor y un privilegio estar aquí. Le pido, primero de todo, que le dé la gracia al Señor, la oportunidad, el tiempo de estar aquí con ustedes, las personas maravillosas. Le doy la gracias a mi Padre, a mi Madre, a mi Poderoso Dios. Bendiga, levanten sus manos y aplaudan. En presencia del Señor. Señor Todopoderoso.
Nuestro Dios Muy Grande.
Señor, estamos delante de ti.
Estamos ante tu presencia.
Delante de tu trono, Señor.
En frente de tu trono.
Te damos las gracias por esta oportunidad que nos das.
Te damos las gracias por esta oportunidad.
Y también te doy las gracias, Señor, por el poder de dirección.
Te doy las gracias, Señor, por este temprano día.
Por el poder de dirección en este lugar.
Por el poder de dirección en este lugar.
Pedimos tu guía en tu dirección, Señor.
Te pedimos, Señor, por tu guía y direcciones.
Que seas tú quien sea, Señor, estas mujeres que tú has escogido.
Te pedimos que tú, Señor, guíe a esta hermosa mujer que tú has elegido.
En cada líder.
A estos líderes que tú has...
Con sabiduría y entendimiento.
Dado sabiduría y comprensión.
Para que puedan hacer decisiones correctas.
Para que puedan tomar las decisiones correctas.
Gracias, Señor, por este momento.
Te damos las gracias por este momento.
Por este día tan hermoso.
Por este día tan hermoso.
Que estamos aquí unidos.
En los que estamos aquí unidos.
Para platicar sobre los negocios de la ciudad.
Para tomar negocios sobre la ciudad y decisiones sobre nuestras reglas.
Darles tu bendición.
Darles tu bendición.
Tu protección divina.
Darles tu protección divina.
Que todo lo que se haga en este lugar.
Todo lo que se haga en este lugar.
Que seas tú quien esté presente en esto.
Que seas tú quien esté presente en cada decisión.
Porque así es como te honramos y te damos gloria.
Por eso te damos honor y gloria.
Gracias, Señor.
Gracias, mi Señor.
Así pues, bendícenos, Señor.
Así pues, te pedimos la bendición, Señor.
Bendice a esta gente que va, a todos los que van a participar.
Te bendice a todos estos gente que van a participar.
Y que sea su santa y divina voluntad.
Que sea su voluntad, Señor.
Dadle gracias por el Señor que nos invitó.
Te damos las gracias por el poder de dirección que nos invitó.
Bendícela grandemente.
Te bendícen en un modo poderoso.
Gracias, Señor Jesús.
Gracias, mi Señor Jesús.
Yo los bendiga a cada uno de ustedes.
Dios los bendiga.
Y esta sesión está abierta.
Esta sesión está abierta.
Que ustedes los bendigan.
Gracias.
Gracias. Antes de ir al juramento, les pediría que tengan un momento para pensar. Comisionado Blackhorn no está aquí, su madre está gravemente enferma y está herido. Y le deseamos viajes seguros y a su madre.
Señor presidente, hay muchos heridos en nuestra comunidad, muchos muertos que han habido. Así que recordemos a todas las familias que han vivido en estas últimas semanas.
Gracias. Gracias a todos. Tom, ¿te puedes levantar?
Le pedimos, presidente, que se levante. En los Estados Unidos de América, y en el Republic of America, donde se está sentando: Una nación bajo Dios, individual con justicia y justicia para todos.
Gracias. El siguiente item es la aprobación de la agenda, comisionados. Tenemos una eliminación que conozco hasta ahora, y está bajo el artículo 8C. Se presentará a una fecha diferente. Así que si su motion refleja la eliminación del artículo 8C.
¿Y esa es una presentación por el Consistorio de la Edad?
Correcto. Y un cambio adicional es el artículo 10G. Te presentaré junto con el gerente y el defensor general del Ministerio para la Seguridad Social.
Bien, señor presidente, voy a enviar un motion a aprobar la agenda de la reunión de hoy, el 2 de agosto de 2016. Está amendada con esos items bajo el 8C, que se eliminará. Y luego, por supuesto, presentarán el artículo 10G para nuestra Corte de Derechos.
Segunda.
Motion en la segunda. Claro de color.
Comisionado Omero.
Sí.
Comisionado O'Donnell.
Sí.
Presidente O'Donnell.
Sí. Antes de ir más allá, quiero bienvenida a nuestro stand-in abogado, el Sr. Randy Adio, que estará con nosotros por algún tiempo hasta una sustitución permanente. Bueno, no se puede reemplazar al Sr. Malone, pero la persona que esté en su oficina. Pero Randy, gracias por estar aquí con nosotros. Manténnos rectos, golpea si tienes que hacerlo, lo que hagamos si cruzamos la línea. Usa lo que sea que tengas que hacer para que nos devuelvan. Gracias por estar aquí con nosotros.
Gracias.
Bien. El siguiente item de la agenda son los premios de reconocimiento. Tenemos una presentación premiando al empleado del mes de julio de 2016. Y esto se presentará a Audrey Medina de la detención de Juemel. Comisionado, ¿quieres acompañarme en la parte inferior de la presentación? O, gracias.
Buenas tardes, presidente y comisionada de la Comunidad, gerente y nuestro abogado de la Comunidad esta vez. Estoy aquí a cargo del Comité de Acción de los Empleados. Queremos presentar al empleado del mes a Audrey Medina, la policía de la detención de Juemel. Ella ha trabajado para la Comunidad durante un año de servicio. La policía Medina fue nominada por el teniente Andrew Montoya por su disposición a cubrir y acomodar los necesidades de las instalaciones. Al tomar tiempo entre el swing y el cambio de horario. Ella está dispuesta a cubrir a sus compañeros, a las llamadas y a las desviaciones cuando se solicita a un momento dado con una actitud muy positiva. Queremos agradecerla por su servicio en la detención de Juemel. Este es el plan que en realidad estamos presentando también a la policía.
Felicitaciones.
El teniente Montoya realmente quería hablar sobre... Le dije todo. Dejemos de lado eso, lo tomé todo.
Bien, el siguiente item de la agenda es el artículo 6, preocupaciones de los ciudadanos. Esta es la hora en que los ciudadanos que quieren hablar pueden venir a la comisión y se limitarán a cinco minutos o menos. No se puede tomar ninguna acción sobre esto. ¿Alguien en los ojos? ¿Alguien más? No, estoy bromeando. El Sr. Phil, adelante.
No sería una reunión sin el señor Phil.
Estaba pensando que no sería una reunión sin el señor Phil. Continúa diciendo algo.
Buenos días. Gracias, señor presidente. Tengo una petición aquí que tiene 250 a 300 firmas. Puede que haya algunos que ya mueran. Estas fueron recogidas cuando los inmigrantes entraron en... Cuando 11 inmigrantes entraron en el Salto. Y... He estado con esto hasta recientemente. Así que me gustaría entregar esto al gerente. Esta es mi única copia, y algunos de ellos son realmente finos. Pero tal vez en algún lugar por ahí podemos hacer un taller o algo sobre la resolución del inmigrante. O disfrutar la opción de either despedirlo. Déjame leer lo que dice la petición. Petición oponiendo la resolución del inmigrante 97-58. Nosotros, los contratados, sentimos que la Comunidad no debería financiar los inmigrantes con nuestros ingresos financieros. Gracias.
Así que usted realmente confía en nosotros si nos da la original del documento. Así que es curioso que ahora tengamos la formal que usted hace.
También es un documento histórico genial sobre algunos de los nombres que están aquí.
Bien.
Gracias.
Otro ciudadano que quiera, por favor, acude y indique su nombre para la documentación.
Buenos días, señor presidente. Mi nombre es Kristi Abreu, y soy residente de Amaya. Y durante los últimos dos años he sido el presidente de la Asociación de la Comunidad de Amaya y he estado sentada en la tribuna de la Corte de la Comunidad durante los últimos cuatro años. Y hoy estoy muy emocionada de ver que tenemos la RFP de Amaya en la agenda. Y solo quería personalmente venir y agradecerles por su continua apoyo y siempre tomando mis llamadas, emails y, ya sabes, ayudándonos. Amaya es una de las comunidades más nordestinas. Y a veces, ya sabes, tendemos a ser pensados como casi inexistentes. Pero estamos allí y apreciamos su apoyo. Y esperamos ver el centro de la comunidad abierto así como invitarlos a todos a nuestro primer anual Chilis Salsa Cookoff.
¿Cuándo es?
Eso será el 17 de septiembre, sábado. Comenzará, creo, a las 10:00. Vamos a publicar boletines y personalmente escribirles también. De nuevo, gracias por todo su apoyo, y esperamos verlo en el edificio. Gracias.
Señor presidente, lo siento, lo disculpo. Ha taken...
¿Cuántos años?
...veinte años para llegar a este punto.
Estaba graduando de secundaria cuando el edificio fue comprado. Así que había hecho y criado a un hijo y espero ver a mis dos hijas más jóvenes y apreciar el edificio en sí. Y con suerte veremos que vengan ustedes y tal vez tendremos algunas actividades y cosas en las que todos pueden venir y visitar nuestro pequeño centro de paseo.
Muy emocionado. Gracias.
Sí.
¿Alguien más que quiera dirigirse a la comisión? Bien. Pasando a la aprobación de los minutos. Comisionados, tenemos dos sets de minutos. El primero es la aprobación del minuto regular de la reunión comisionada de julio de 2016.
Señor presidente, me parece que debemos aprobar los minutos de julio de 2016.
Voy a ir adelante en segundo, señor presidente.
Gracias, comisionados. Claro de color.
Comisionado Omero.
Sí.
Comisionado O'Donnell.
Sí.
Presidente O'Donnell.
Sí. El siguiente es la aprobación del minuto especial de la reunión comisionada de julio 12 de 2016.
Move para la aprobación, señor presidente.
Segunda.
Claro de color.
Comisionado Omero.
Sí.
Comisionado O'Donnell.
Sí.
Presidente O'Donnell.
Sí. Bien, el siguiente es una presentación pública por parte del Foro Servicio respecto al incendio de la calle de Magafi, en la Comunidad de Malone. Con el Foro Servicio. También quiero reconocer al señor Ray Corral, que es un gran gerente de incendios que estamos afortunados de tener en nuestro distrito.
¿Puedes ver esto aquí?
Sí, puedo.
Sí.
Ahora puedo.
Señor presidente y comisionadas, gerente de la Comunidad. Me gustaría agradecerles a todos. Hemos tenido una reunión el jueves pasado y recibimos mucho apoyo de nuestros cooperadores y cosas, incluyendo al condado de Taus y la Comunidad de Taus. El comisionado Romero estaba allí. Damos un poco de fondo y explicamos la situación. Hemos tenido un ataque de tormenta el domingo. Bueno, es cuando se detectó, de todos modos, el domingo 24 de julio. Había una oportunidad para nosotros ver este incendio en particular un poco diferente en lugar de simplemente saltar inmediatamente y suprimirla. Queríamos tener algunas conversaciones sobre posiblemente manejar este incendio para múltiples objetivos de recursos. Así que reunimos a algunos tipos clave, el condado de Taus, la Comunidad, el pueblo de Taus, la comunidad firewise, representante de Pot Creek, Universidad Methodistica del Sur. Chris Coté estaba allí. Había varios individuos, algunos miembros del público estaban allí. Y explicaron lo que queríamos hacer, qué tipo de comportamiento de incendio teníamos allí. Muy baja a moderada intensidad, creciendo alrededor, quitándonos un gran número de basura construida en el terreno forestal y algunos de los combustibles más pequeños, lo que nos ayuda para que no tengamos un incendio catastrónico. Lo que esto hizo al final, fuimos capaces de quemar 525 acres. Y lo que eso nos ayuda a hacer es crear una ruptura de combustible para Pot Creek y Yana Kumato en particular. Hicimos mucha educación durante este evento. Rechazando en las comunidades, corremos líneas de tráfico. Hicimos algunos spots de radio. Teníamos un tablero de ensalada en Smith's hablando con la gente. Probablemente alcanzamos a unos 400 personas en Smith's solo. Solo tratando de ayudar a la gente a entender porque ves el humo y es muy aterrador. Y estaba justo en el patio trasero de Taus. Así que pensamos que era una tremenda oportunidad para nosotros para tratar de enseñarle algo sobre el incendio y cuáles son esos beneficios positivos realmente. Incluyendo algunas de las cosas sociales de proteger la seguridad de la gente de todos los flujos de basura posteriores y cosas que suceden si fuera un incendio severamente quemado con mucho calor. Los impactos del humo habrían sido diferentes. Colocamos dos estaciones de monitoreo de humo, una en el campus de la SMU y una en el centro de la Comunidad de Yana Kumato. Nunca llegaron ni cerca al nivel alto donde habría tenido problemas. Habría tenido que dejar de quemar o, ya sabes, trabajar con la gente que tiene sensibilidad al humo. En realidad obtuvimos algunos comentarios muy positivos, incluso de un señor que estaba muy molesto y tiene COPD. Llegó ayer y en realidad nos agradeció. Los efectos del humo no eran tan graves como pensaba. Solo quedó en su casa. Así que lo que nos gustaría hacer es mostrar algunas fotos sobre lo que el incendio realmente hizo. Y Ray incluso hizo un pequeño clip que compartiremos con ustedes. Y luego podemos responder cualquier tipo de preguntas. Pero sentimos muy bien sobre esto porque probablemente nos sobrepasamos. Como ya sabe, Santa Fe tuvo algunos incendios catastrónicos, severamente quemados. Y hemos estado trabajando con los miembros de la Comunidad, el condado, el pueblo, solo un gran número de personas diferentes. Tenemos aproximadamente 20 socios involucrados en la Coalition de Valles de Taus, que es una gran huella de 280,000 acres que hemos elegido. Tenemos diferentes fases en las que trataremos de ese terreno, pasando a un nivel de paisaje mayor. Y el canonio de Magafi es parte de esa huella. Así que está en fase dos, pero podemos avanzar un poco antes debido a que este evento ocurrió y ver qué más podemos hacer allí, la reducción y quemar más y cosas. Tenemos aumentado, tendremos aumentado la forage para ambos, la cosecha de vida y la vida salvaje. Veremos que los forbes vienen y prosperan. Simplemente no podían hacerlo cuando el sol no llegaba al terreno forestal. Y el incendio también ayuda a liberar nutrientes en el suelo. Así que con eso, creo que las imágenes solo se están haciendo su propia ruin.
Así que Ray, ¿siente que fue un buen éxito?
Sí, señor Jim. Real buen éxito allí. Como sabes... Lo siento, comisionado Jim.
Bien.
Pero él es un compañero de incendios, así que nos llamamos hermanos. Gran éxito allí. Lo que hicimos fue básicamente quitarnos ese, probablemente, un valor de 150 años de combustibles en ese país. La forma en que estaba quemando, y Jim, o el comisionado Rambo, entenderá su terminología un poco mejor cuando se refieren a las preguntas. Así que hablaré de eso. Estábamos siendo aislados, quemando en los placos de la hoguera, quitando ese humo sucio que probablemente tenía 20 a 50 años de edad. Abriendo ese tipo, bajando a la segunda capa de polvo, que es ese tipo de suelo productivo, donde el suelo empieza a venir juntándose. Y pienso que probablemente cada pie de combustible, 525 acres de combustible, entre las partes inferiores que salen con nuestros vientos suristas, algo bloqueante. Eso podría ser un buen bloqueo para cualquier cosa que salga del área de los arroyos calientes hasta el área de Pot Creek.
Comisionados, mi experiencia con Ray es que siempre ha sido sobre la seguridad primero y luego cualquier oportunidad de entrenamiento. Así que cuando dijo que se utilizaba mucho el entrenamiento, esto es realmente bueno porque a veces no obtengo esa oportunidad. Y él es realmente bueno en promover eso.
Nunca llegó a, señor presidente, a las fronteras del sur del lado del este.
No, señor.
Lo que es ahora el Foro Servicio.
Sí, señor.
Pero llegó, creo, a la miranda de Belinda. ¿Es eso correcto?
Arroyo Belinda es donde usamos una carretera justo a este lado de Belinda. Arroyo como una controla.
Arroyo.
Correcto.
Este es el nuevo apoyo en este lado.
Correcto.
El sur del este también es parte de la reunión el jueves.
Así que ha sido un incendio muy beneficioso, y eso es algo bueno. Como has dicho, proporciona una ruptura para cualquier incendio potencial que pueda comenzar más tarde. ¿Qué hay de los grandes, esos grandes árboles que ves en la pantalla? ¿Acabó matando alguno o...?
No estoy diciendo que matara a ninguno de ellos. Esos vamos a continuar monitorizando para la segunda orden de reparaciones de incendios. Principalmente durante la primera orden, justo después del incendio. Estamos viendo que tenemos muy, muy poca escorch, lo que significa que las agujas o las hojas, si se quiere, son rojas. La ponderosa pina puede soportar hasta el 25% de la canaña siendo roja antes de que empiece a ver señales de mortalidad y a empeorar. Esta ponderosa pina es un traje adaptativo que ama el incendio, que lo necesita.
Y creo que la otra pregunta que tengo es con respecto al río en esa pequeña área. ¿Será seguro en cuanto a la sangre o cualquier cosa que pueda pasar en el futuro? ¿Los persianas o los que viven por el río no verán ningún efecto de erosión, ningún daño o ramas o algo que vayan hacia abajo? Ese río o esa miranda tiende a correr a veces. Corre bastante rápido, así que...
Sí, señor. Así que, no, señor, si miras la pantalla, si pasamos por allí, verás algunas fotos de caminando por la área que acaba de quemarse. Y tenemos un gran número de cobertura superficial quedada intacta. Y con eso y el quemado del incendio, la intensidad que fue quemado, no hizo, como decimos, "bueno", los suzos, no hizo que los suzos fueran hidrolíticos o, ya sabes, cuando el incendio, cuando el agua le golpea, no va a hacer que se derrumbe y causar un desprendimiento. Ves la pantalla en particular, estas pantallas. Todavía hay palos de vegetación allí, todavía hay palos de polvo. Eso es exactamente lo que queremos prevenir, lo que estabas hablando de.
Gracias.
También esperamos en el futuro de darles un seguimiento. Tenemos puntos fotográficos allí de antes, después, y mientras continuemos monitoreando los efectos secundarios de ese incendio.
Así que en este punto es solo smoldiendo, sin ningún incendio real o...
No, es smoldering. Sabes, cuando decimos que se enciende la tierra, no el 100% de esa área está completamente quemada. Todavía va a, dentro de este perímetro, probablemente haya bosques de verde allí o combustibles no quemados que continúan haciendo algo, limpiando allí. Así que todavía deberíamos ver humo en la comunidad o de la comunidad por otra semana o si estas lluvias vienen, lo que están llamando, asegurándonos. Pero todavía deberíamos ver humo allí por un par de días al menos. Está todo dependiente en este momento, pero ahora mismo está seguro en esta caja y no esperamos que crezca mucho de esa caja.
Gracias. Señor Ford.
Gracias a todos por estar aquí. Solo pensé en tomar la oportunidad y hacer una pregunta sobre el incendio que está pasando. Solo vi que está cerca de la vía. ¿Podría darnos un poco de información sobre eso?
Sí, señor. Así que el incendio allí por debajo, en la vía, se reportó el sábado. Recibimos recursos del incendio de Magafi para responder. Teníamos un inicial de forageo en respuesta a ese incendio. Ese incendio, una vez que llegamos allí, determinamos que estaba quemando en una área que ya estaba quedando reducida. Y teníamos carreteras alrededor y con recursos limitados y con Magafi, tomamos un enfoque un poco más cautivo en eso. Polvo directo en la línea de control en el este de la parte occidental, lo que significa que estaba contra la orilla del incendio y movimos el combustible y lo conectamos en dos carreteras que habían sido utilizadas para la recolección de hierba de incendio. Y durante la noche y mientras los hombres estaban en fila, el incendio se extendió a esas carreteras, que pensábamos que haría. Así que realmente no gastamos demasiada energía allí. Pero uno de los factores decisivos en eso fue que todo el combustible ya estaba fuera de allí. Y no había realmente ningún riesgo de valles en la área inmediata donde el humo fuera un problema, o las fiestas estuvieran pasando. Así que decidimos que con los recursos que teníamos, eso era el mejor enfoque que podríamos tomar.
Gracias.
Han llegado a 43 acres.
¿Y está conteno?
Sí, está.
Está conteno. Tenemos tres motores allí y tenemos un equipo, Black Canyon. Es un equipo de la Comunidad de Santa Fe. Están ayudando entre eso y Magafi, y veréis que se quedan un poco más por el próximo cuarto de día.
Gracias por todo tu trabajo duro. Realmente aprecio su presencia. He visto muchos motores de incendio y personal de incendio, y quiero agradecerles a todos por su trabajo duro.
Y han estado alimentando a estas personas de lugares locales y todo eso. Es un buen trabajo.
Me gustaría agradecerles también. Gran parte del éxito fue debido al trabajo duro que el CWPPP corporal hizo en esto y con el trabajo que Nathan Sanchez y Chris Coté realmente han ayudado en derrocar los arbustos y obtener esa información y ese aviso de que uno de esos días podrían ver humo en las montañas. Podría ser un tiempo, pero no está haciendo nada de bueno. Y todo ese trabajo duro que todos nuestros cooperadores han puesto en esto ha ayudado a lograr el éxito.
Gracias a todos por mantenernos actualizados.
Gracias.
Señor presidente.
Comisionado O'Donnell.
Quería agradecer...
Wanted to thank Mr. Corral and Ms. Malone and also recognize Kathy DeLucas, who's public relations on the force. And please let Dorothea Martinez know that we appreciate her press releases. We've been putting them on Facebook. So we appreciate the updates on both from the McGaffey fire and the MIA fire.
All right. Anything else to say? That's it? All right. We'll move on to the second presentation today, or the last presentation. It's a presentation from the Adult Learning Center. Judy.
And Nina Gonzalez.
Good morning and thank you for being here with us.
Good morning and thank you for having us. My name is Judy Hofer. I'm the Director of the Adult Learning Center. And this is Nina Gonzalez, Program Specialist, also with the Adult Learning Center. Our purpose today. So our purpose today, more than anything, we are now in our third year of receiving county funding to support the services that we provide to our community. And this is our annual report. So we're here to give you an update and answer any questions. But I really think the main point today is to thank you guys because we really, if you look at Nina and myself, we're pretty small. We're like a small program. And we are such a force in our community and I'm not sure that many people really understand fully what we do. So we want to talk about that a little bit and share with you our successes that are in large part due to our community's support. So thank you. The adult, let me just give you a little overview and just say, we're going to bypass the PowerPoint because we are extremely fortunate that we're able to have a student come in and that's the success story. So rather than us, what I always say, blah, 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 which is what educators do, rather than us do a bunch of that, we really want to make sure we have time for Heather Ledoux to talk with you about her experience and share her experiences. So we're going to do a very condensed version. But I also want to make sure I thank the people who are here today. We have four of the board members from our community who give us a lot of technical support and help us with our fundraising and as well as staff members. So that's who we are and then we'll do the quick overview. So Adult Learning Center, if I had more time, I'd want to ask you, you know, do you know what we do and what do you know about us? But in a nutshell, we serve between 150 to 200 students a year. We increasingly serve 16 to 18 year olds. So we look at ourselves as part of the strategy when we think about teen suicide and what's going on in our community. We really are a place where those that didn't succeed in high school have another chance to be with us. And so we provide high school equivalency education in both Spanish and English. We also do ESL, English as a Second Language, to about 30 immigrant students each year. And we do what's called basic literacy and life skills. And those are people who want computer skills and be able to apply for a job online or we have a fellow who's part of AA and he wanted to be able to read the book. So we have some basic literacy skills and we have students up to age 60, 65 in our program. The contract that he provides with us specifically goes to supporting the role that Nina Gonzalez plays as Program Specialist and she'll talk about that in a bit. But that, a huge part of our success is the role she plays because she does the individualized attention, intense student coaching, advising, creates a safe place for students, helps them to problem solve around their lives. We are so much more than an education center. We really are 100% behind our students to figure out how to be successful and go on to college or jobs. Achievements, we rock. We really are a force. We received the Program of the Year. So there's 26 adult education programs in the state of New Mexico. We're number one again. This is our third year in the past five or six years that we achieved that award. And to give you a sense, this past year, we had 56 high school graduates. That's about a third of all high school graduates are coming through our program. I mean, that's really significant. We had 43 of those gain employment, 39 went on to college. And we engaged, and Nina will talk about that, but we're increasingly engaging with employers, developing professionalism skills, job readiness skills, job shadowing opportunities for our students. And we engaged 39 employers in our community this past year. And when I say engaged, I mean they are coming into our program, they are job shadowing students, they are talking about their own personal stories about what it takes to be successful in their fields. So with that said, I want Nina to give a brief overview about specifically how the county funding makes all of this work.
Good morning. Thanks for having me today. Again, my name is Nina Gonzalez and I'm the Program Specialist for the Adult Learning Center. The slide up here is kind of an overview of the Career Pathways program that we offer. And the Program Specialist position that you all largely funded really made this happen. And so there's an external component that, as Judy mentioned, is once the workshop, we look at things like conflict resolution, professionalism skills, how do you have a job interview? I taught a workshop, how to stay sane in crazy times. So really looking at how do we respond to conflict? So as Judy last mentioned, we have lots of employer engagement, job shadowing, interviewing professionals. But there's also what I would say is a more internal component that happens much more behind closed doors. A huge, huge majority of my time is spent working one-on-one with students, helping them navigate, how do you respond to conflict and adversity? How do you stay focused on your goals despite hardships that perpetually arise? Particularly for our student groups, you know, often they have a lot going on in their lives, as we all do. And for all of us, the more that we can know how to respond effectively to hardship and conflict and adversity, how to problem solve, it affects us in ways that I think is hard to be captured in the numbers. Whereas our numbers are outstanding, I think the real jewel of what we're doing has to do with the internal shifts that our students make. The way that they feel confident about themselves, the way they see themselves in the world, the way that they respond to the negative voices in their head that say that they're not smart or they can't do it or they'll never be anything, you know, that we see tangibly starts to shift, that they feel like, I can do this and I am smart and I am confident. And the way that they relate to their fellow classmates, the way that they begin to relate to their family and can transfer these problem solving skills to how they're getting along with their husband or wife or children, how it directly translates to how they operate in the workplace. So when we're teaching professionalism skills, it's really how do we be an effective member of our community, of our workplace team, of our family team? And so I'd say that's the real heart of my position, is supporting people and coaching people to come to that ability of themselves. And, you know, I'm going to turn it over to Heather now, but we have so many students, you know. I had a young girl come to me, 17, has a year and a half old baby and to watch these transformations, she did a job shadow. She thought maybe, first of all, she came, she had no idea what she wanted to do. She thought maybe cosmetology. Then she did a lot of research and she said, you know, I'd like to be a criminal investigator. So then I set her up with our health investigator person. She did a one-on-one interview with Tamara Stevenson and she said, wow, I don't think I could stomach that job. And then she said, well, you know, I'm really good at graphic design. And we actually got her an internship. She's been there for several months at the Taus News, full blown internship, successful at the Taus News and now has enrolled in college. She just came to visit us. Her internship was positive, it's ended. She can put that on her resume for the rest of her life and she's at college now. So that's all in the course of eight months. So I'm just so incredibly thankful to have a job that I get to really watch this kind of growth and transformation. It's so rewarding. And so I'd like to thank you for that. And at this point, I want to turn it over to Heather and let her really firsthand tell you her experience in the program. So Heather.
Thank you.
Heather also has her children, Adam and Mateo, and her niece and nephew on the list today.
Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, thanks for giving me the chance to... I left high school when I was 15 years old, so I was scheduled to graduate in 2007. I'm 27 years old and I've been on this journey for 11 years. When I left high school, it was kind of like a weird transformation. I didn't know where to go. I didn't know, I really didn't know what I was going to do with my life. But they put me in touch with the UNM Learning Center and it was a lot different back then. It was a lot of self-study, they would provide you with books and stuff like, it was a self-study course. It wasn't like a really like an actual facilitated classroom or a teacher. So it took me a long time to get the courage to believe in myself that I was actually capable of doing something like that. So I had Adam and Adam is six and for those six years I stayed at home. Mateo is now two. And about a year ago, I went back to the UNM Learning Center and they put me in touch with Nina. And Nina took a look at my test scores and the best thing that she could have told me is that you're ready. You're ready to take your test. And so I didn't feel like I was ready, but I went and I took four out of five of my tests and I passed them. So I got bummed up in my math class. And when I got bummed up, Nina said, just go take your math test. I think you're ready for it. Just, let's just see what happens. So because Nina believed in me and you that I, I had been working really hard towards it, I went and I took my test and I passed it. And I passed it within 80%. So that means that I qualified with the New Mexico Lottery Scholarship and that provides me with four years of college. So now I'm enrolled at UNM Taos. Through Nina's condition, through the career pathways, they got to explore a bunch of different things. I've been interested in going to be a child advocate. So I was put in touch with, I was placed at the CAD and got to interview all of the people that work for the fostered children and all the victims and stuff like that. So I can put that on my resume also. But if it wasn't for, if it wasn't for the one-on-ones that we helped with Nina and her really taking a look at and working with the law and telling us, I think you're ready. Sometimes that's all we need is just one person to tell you that you can do it. And so I'm actually really grateful for this program because they put me in a whole different path than I already. I never thought that college would be something that I could do and I know I can.
Congratulations. Congrats.
I told Heather that she's the highlight of my day. If you ever wonder about the impact of education for a parent, Heather is a role model for these four children here and it just keeps rippling out. The number one indicator of a child's literacy level is the mother's. So if you're interested in, we want our young folks to be successful and read and do well in school, you have to put a parent in the equation. I want to say quickly about our funding. I said we're not going to blah, blah, and here we are, blah, blah. But it's important to know, our budget is about $250,000 a year. That's peanuts. I mean, that's really a small amount. We're under UNM Taos. We're grateful for UNM Taos. UNM Taos provides us with our space, our rent, our HR support, IT support. It gives us legitimacy. We're a real deal. It does not outweigh our given funding. So we raise our money. About 60 to 70% of our funds come from federal and state dollars and the remaining 35 to 40% come from places like the county. We're also talking with the town, trying to get town support. We have Chevron, it's Mark Gallegos, right? He's in Questa, I believe. Yeah. So we have Chevron support. We run a class in Questa. We get Taus Community Foundation support. We do, our board is very instrumental in helping us with donor development. Our cost per student has increased since the last time I presented. Last time it was close to just a little over $700 per student per year. Now we're closer to $1,000 per student per year. The reason for that is we are generating, we're trying to increase our overall budget, part of Nina's role or how Nina's funded. But we're able to get more money because the adult education dollars are being driven by performance. And as our performance increases, we can bring in more of those federal and state dollars as well. But an investment of about $1,000 a student is what, is what we're doing. And just so you know, it's estimated that for every HSE, High School Equivalency graduate, it generates close to $10,000 in wages in New Mexico. So a $1,000 investment, you get $10,000 back. I think that's, that's all I'm going to say there, so we're wrapping up.
So I just want to talk about looking towards the future, where we're headed. This year obviously has been incredibly successful with our Career Pathways program. And moving forward, we really want to expand on that. We're looking at creating like a leadership certificate. We are reaching into students who already maybe have their high school diploma, but whose skills are not yet college ready, who are really needing some upskilling within the workforce. So we've been in conversation with Dean Archuleta at the One Stop, Luis Durán, who runs the Lioa program, Town of Taos, they have a lot of entry level employees that need professionalism support. So we are expanding our career pathways to really think, this isn't really just about getting your high school equivalency. This is about being an active force in our town to help people gain meaningful employment, keep meaningful employment and really participate in the workplace and in the community in an effective way. So we are expanding these workshops, we're inviting people in who already have their high school equivalency. And the idea of a leadership certificate that we're envisioning, it'd be something that we would really stand behind. If somebody came to the county and applied and they have this leadership certificate attached to their resume, it means they've been through our program. They know how to show up on time. They know how to resolve conflict. They know how to problem solve when the car breaks down and can't get to work, so they show up. We're also looking at taking our Career Pathways model and using it for professional development throughout the state for adult education. We've been so successful here that we're really looking at, hey, how can we help all of New Mexico with some of these ideas? So Taos is really a role model in adult education and that's something we're really proud of and speaks for our whole community that we can create something there to really turn around, not just our workforce, but that, you know, our economic, obviously, our economic development impacts so many things in the lives of people. To kind of honor that, so there's always been some confusion around our name. People call us the Adult Literacy Center, the Literacy Center, the GED Program, the UNM Learning Program, the Adult Learning Program, and it's always been a very confusing thing. So partially to alleviate that confusion, but also to really honor where we're headed. It's a new, it's a new era in our program. We're planning on changing our name to the Taos Education and Career Center, which will be tech. So students can say, I go to the tech school or the tech center. And I think that's it. So look forward to that. We're going to be launching a new awareness and rebranding campaign for tech. And can't thank you enough for your support. Really, it's an incredible investment that you all are putting forth and, you know, the ripple effects throughout the whole community are just immense. I want to introduce here is Gary Yama. He's our new admin, three and data tech. He's been a high school teacher for many years and also worked mostly up at Marino Valley. So he comes from an incredible education. So he comes from an incredible educational background and worked with at-risk youth. He's just recently joined our team and he's passing out just a little token of our appreciation, which is a calendar that has some fun facts. Judy's gonna tell you about it, but thank you again. I just deeply, deeply appreciate y'all and your support. So just quickly, adult education has an advocacy organization called the New Mexico Adult Education Association. And so the calendar that you have before you is a statewide effort with photos and statistics from across the state that was presented to our state legislators this past February. And we reserved some of these specifically to give to you, to remind you both of adult education and the impact we have. But more than anything, to thank you for being part of our success story and believing in us and continuing to support us. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the Judy... When will you be submitting a request for funding from the County yet?
Can you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
When will you be submitting a request for funding from Taos County?
It's already been submitted and we're now telling me it's still in the legal process. So the contract's being developed, I guess, what done.
So it's done up on an annual basis?
Yes, it's done on an annual basis.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, yeah, with this program, we do, when the yearly, I think the RFP process last year would have given them another avenue, because they're government-to-government with UNM and we were able to do a direct, through UNM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Thank you guys for everything. Her quote is, "It just takes one person to get you going." I mean, that's a great quote to carry.
Thank you.
Could you please give that to Mr. Tom?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
I'm not sure Bartman's how to read a calendar. Maybe we'll teach him after this.
Send him to us, okay?
All right.
Mr. Chairman, before we move forward, it has been brought to my attention, the July 5th meeting minutes, if we could bring those back? There's a correction that needs to be made?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, it would be a motion to reconsider. It was acted on in the same meeting, so Commissioner, we need to reconsider that.
Okay, so will it add effect, Mr. Chairman?
A second then.
Motion and a second to reconsider the minutes. Thank you all for being here by George Stadium. Motion to reconsider item 7A, which was the decision regarding approval of the July 5, 2016 regular commission meeting minutes. Commissioner O'Meadle?
And Mr. Chairman, thanks very much. Actually, do we need to vote on it?
Well, what is the...
I made a motion, correct.
Yes. Oh, that's... There's a vote on revisiting the item.
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Thambr?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner, for correcting that.
It's all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The minutes of July 5th, page 18, with regards to the item of choosing or selecting Mr. Gabe Cisneros as the lobbyist for Taos County. On the roll call, I wanted to correct, I abstained from that vote and in there it asked me to say yes. So I would like to move to make that correction.
I do remember you abstaining.
And I would like to make the correction if you would agree that I was absent, that I did not abstain, was absent.
Correct. So I'll include that in the motion as well, Mr. Chairman. Just need a second.
Yes, a second then.
Okay, motion and a second. Clerk Calloway.
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Thambr?
Yes. Okay, anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Moving on to item 9A, is a discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of recommendation to award a NISA construction, ITV 2016-4, construction on the Amaya Community Center, which we referred to before. This is Ms. Vee Hill, our Chief Improvement Officer. Thank you for being here this morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commission. This morning, in the packet before you, is the debetabulation that was given for the three packets received through this bid. And based on the lowest price, staff recommendation is to award an invitation to bid 2016-04 for the construction of the Amaya Community Center to a NISA construction for the base bid, subject to negotiations or mutually agreeable contract.
When I first saw this, I thought it was our NISA and I was gonna say, "She's just gonna get all this stuff at this level."
I know. It's such a coincidence. I even told her she's such a hard worker, she's actually gonna do all that for us.
And so, Mr. Chairman, is there a timeline as to when this should be completed?
That itself, from what I understood, and I gotta remember back, because there used to be several bids. In this case, I think they had like a 90 to 120-day window, but I'm not sure, but I think it was 90 days. Is it?
It's, it's a small project and I don't wanna put pressure on contractors, but it really is a small project. It shouldn't take more than 90 days. It's all interior work, so that's what we ask for in the contracts.
So this, this will, Mr. Chairman, be a turnkey?
It will be a certificate occupancy project. The kitchen will be complete, the property won't be painted, and there won't be floor finishes, but it will be a safe, occupiable space for both the fire department and the Amaya Community Center.
And so why didn't we contract to complete the whole, the kitchen and the floor?
Probably would have added about another $150,000 to the project.
And that money's not in the...
Yes.
Are we going to seek that money from the legislature?
I would like to see if we could do the painting in house, some of the things we can do in house with our facilities crew or, and then whatever's missing, yes, we'll ask for some. But I think getting the certificate of occupancy and getting the building occupied is the priority at this time. We will require a little extra money out of our general fund to cover the difference from what we have to bill.
And why do you say a little extra money?
Approximately $50,000. Put aside for worst-case scenario, which is to hope we can hit that amount. Elsa, are you wanting in the motion to be, is there any negotiation that still needs to occur or that is already taken?
There is in some, in some of the terms and conditions at this point. Not really the price, but the terms and conditions. Both parties actually agree before that can be presented. Hopefully here in the next meeting.
Okay, so you would like that part of the motion, Commissioners? If you choose to make a motion, I would ask that you do include the negotiation.
Mr. Chairman, so will it add effect?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk Calloway.
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Thambr?
Yes. All right. That's exciting news. Great data. Item B is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of, for recommendation toward HO construction, ITV 2016-2. This is for the Chami Sal transfer station grading and drainage improvement. Ms. Vee Hill?
Yes, again, in this packet before you is actually a tabulation. We only had one responder to this packet, so we reviewed it to make sure it was responsive, and it was. And based on the different alternates that were listed within this bid packet, we reviewed that with the actual budget. And we are asking staff recommendation is recommending the award of the invitation to bid of 2016-02, Chami Sal transfer station, the grading and drainage improvements project for bid alternate one and bid base items 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, G1, G2, and G3 to HO construction, subject to negotiations of a mutually agreeable contract.
Mr. Chairman, the current status, the walls of that particular transfer station, are they still the old railroad-type walls that we've had for a few years now?
They are, and they're actually deteriorating fairly quickly here. So it's, it's actually a matter of public safety to get this project moving as well as weather-wise. Obviously, we're coming to the monsoon season, but it gets colder out there in Chami Sal than it does here faster. So this is one of those tiny issues that we gotta kind of get a move on so we can fix it and do the retaining walls and do what we need to do to make that station safe, obviously.
So this contract is going to include the retaining walls as well?
Yes, a portion of, obviously, the retaining walls and a portion of actually the flooring that's gonna be removed or replaced in other areas as well.
And this came in within budget?
It came within budget. This one in particular would be $88,954, and that's exclusive with tax.
Pleasure, the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I so moved, we award the bid alternate one and base the items 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, G1, G2, and G3 to the only sole bidder, based on negotiations contingent upon, is it contract negotiation?
Yes.
And does that need to include additive alternates 2, 3, and 4?
No.
Okay.
We don't have enough of those to do those alternates at this point.
Okay. Motion?
I just made my question.
I know. I'm waiting for a second.
I'll go in in a second.
Okay, motion and a second. Discussion? Clerk Calloway.
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Thambr?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Last item in contracts agreements is a discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of Taos County Contract TCC 2016-054 with Northern Mountain Construction. This is for Piguery's Quavo Road. Mr. Salazar, thanks for being here this morning.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, I come before you to ask for approval for a Northern Mountain Construction company who paved seven tenths, around seven tenths of Piguery's Quavo Road.
Commissioners? Commissioner O'Donnell, you want anything? I know I've heard a lot from you on this and I hope you're excited that you're...
I am. I would go ahead and make a motion, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to approve Contract TCC 2016-054 with Northern Mountain Construction for the overlay of Piguery's Quavo Road.
I will second the motion. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other discussion? Clerk Calloway.
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Thambr?
Yes. This is kind of exciting, these last three items, Commissioners, because we didn't just talk about those, it's getting done. Thank you, staff, Mr. Hovnill, Ms. Corlela, Elsa, everybody, Earl, for getting all this stuff done. We've had a lot of discussion on these and we're seeing progress. We really appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner, and I appreciate it. Okay, moving on. We are under item 10, our Resolutions and Ordinances versus item 8, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding Approval of Resolution 2016-31. This is a resolution approving the bylaws of the Planning Commission. This will be presented by our, I'll just talk real slow here as he's coming down the stairs, our Planning Director. Mr. Edward Vee Hill. I saw him earlier. Are I supposed to apologize here? Do you got a song and dance for us you can do to keep the public still watching? No, Mr. Thoki, we don't want you to go up here and sing or dance. Okay, I guess we can go. Well, no, he's a... Let's go. Why don't we do this, Commissioner? Item 10, a motion to move 10C to the next item on the agenda. This would be presented by Mr. Valdez. Who is Kirk? Are you guys making a motion and a second again?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move item C to the current part of the meeting ahead of A and B. Clerk Calloway.
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Thambr?
Yes. Okay, item C is a discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of Resolution 2016-33, a resolution approving DWI Team Court Planning Council bylaws. Morning, Kirk.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Administration. I'm here to present the Resolution 2016-33, a resolution approving DWI Team Court Planning Council bylaws, which we need to operate our DWI Planning Council. And this is kind of something that the council thought that they wanted to have because without them, then they really don't have any direction on which way to guide them or anything. So we decided to come up with this bylaws a long time ago. They did, they did kind of change just an item or two on the agendas from last year to this year. For last year, anybody that was sitting in the, in the room could sit down if they had any interest on DWI to proxy for any of the agencies that weren't there. And we had a discussion about that in the council again. They decided that they wanted to see that if anybody's gonna proxy for anybody else, that it be from the same agency. So they made that change right there.
Okay.
And...
Well, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Valdez. On page three, who is, says the DWI Coordinator, shall make quarterly reports to include agenda minutes, actions taken, all financial transactions. Could we start seeing that report? Could you start presenting that on a quarterly basis?
If you guys wish to, yes, I can.
Yes, I would.
I'd be happy if it was emailed first.
Emailed or at least once a year, come before the public, so we know. Because it does say that, and if you could start emailing us. Who are the members?
Well, that's on the next agenda item.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So 15 regular members and we appoint... I'm just looking at the current resolution in front of us. How many do we appoint? Does we appoint members to this council? 15-membered council. Who's the current, who's the current chairman and how many do we each?
Well, we just had elections again this year, so we can start with the fiscal year '16. I've been excusing '17. And it looks like Snyder's boom will be the chair and Eduardo Martinez, Lieutenant Eduardo Martinez from the State Police, will be the vice chair. And there is 15 members and the list is there, but that's supposed to be another item in the agenda.
So we'll get to that one. I think we'll add those on the next item. Mr. Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Anything else, Kirk?
Only, I need approval for this resolution so that the council can have their bylaws.
Pleasure, the Commission.
Move for approval of Resolution number 2016-33.
Second.
Thank you both. Clerk Calloway.
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Thambr?
Yes. Okay, item D.
Mr. Chairman, I do ask that you, we made a motion on C, but I ask that we move up item D.
Perfect, because they kind of go hand in hand. There you go.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second to move D following C before A and B. Does that make sense to anybody?
Yes.
The adult literacy program that was just here would be up there on ID3, at least to D anyway, so... Clerk Calloway.
Commissioner O'Meadle?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Thambr?
Yes, so item D is a discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of Resolution 2016-34, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Taos County pointing to the Taos County DWI Planning Council. Mr. Valdez?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I come before you again on this resolution to see if I can get approval of the, of the resolution. But we have 15 members of the DWI Planning Council. of the, of the resolution, but we have fifteen members of the DWI Planning Council to serve for fiscal year twenty-seventeen.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
I have some discussion on this, so I will second that with discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Who would be my representative listed here from Piñasco?
We've always tried to work with the Piguery's Quabon down there. This year, I was unsuccessful to get anybody to participate from the Piñasco area, even though I reached out to several different places. Couldn't get anybody to participate, and we eventually just ran out of time.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, it does say we can appoint our members, and I would like to have some time to find someone in the Piñasco area to serve on this. Who, so if you didn't get someone, excuse me, Mr. Chair, if you didn't get someone from the Piñasco area, who did you put in as a substitute?
We went with Robert Vasquez. He actually lives in Placitas, next to Badito, but he works for the Taos Police Department, Taos Quabon Police Department.
But he's still from that area.
But he's still from that area down there.
And, all right, and then, do all these people show up? Is Jennifer Rochelle still with the Public Defender's Office?
She went on vacation, as I understood, and she'll be back. And from what I understand, most of these people have participated in all of our DWI Planning Council meetings. We did change some people that were not, were not participating, and we added more. But I want to make clear is that this appointing of DWI Planning Council members, partly causing the, in the guidelines from DFA's that we got to choose kind of like agencies throughout the area so that they can all kind of represent what the DWI Planning Council will work on, and so on and so forth, and the issues that they may have through their agencies. So, what I did with this was I tried to go to the agencies and see which agencies are the ones that really should be participating in all this. The DFA has always said that, like in our audits, is that we do have a broad range of participation from agencies that they would recommend be in the council. And that's what I try to do, is just keep it based on what the guidelines from DFA say.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that, Mr. Valdez, but the council composition that we just approved on your bylaws do say that the council will represent a broad spectrum of interests, intergovernmental, intergenerational representatives. So, in the future, if you could please give us a few months' warning so I could actively participate in finding someone from District Five to be on the council, and all these names that you've given us, is William Romero still with juvenile probation and parole?
Yes, he is.
And he still shows up?
Yep.
Don Romero, is she still with the Taos County Senior Program?
Yep.
Okay, so all these, and I see Ms. Julie Martinez, and she does show up, I would imagine. Is it a pretty active board?
Yes, it is. We've only had, I believe this year, we only missed two meetings, meeting four-four.
So, Mr. Chairman, obviously.
And we have, and we have the meetings every, every month.
Does Mr. Gutierrez show up from Taos County Solid Waste?
He's one of the ones that we had to replace with one of the nonexistent ones that was not showing up to the council meetings, so he'll be a new one.
Okay, I'd like to have the, be able to, if I could find a replacement.
That is noted already, Commissioner. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what?
It's already noted. You asked that, and you acknowledged that.
All right, thank you. And please give us the meeting minutes, and please give us the warning so I could work on finding someone up there.
Okay.
So, I feel this is a good composition of people, and almost everybody on this, and I think you've done a good job.
So, Mr. Chairman, obviously, Mr. Valdez did put a lot of thought and effort into making sure that there are good representatives in this, and I'll reinforce my motion to approve this.
Any other discussion? Motion and a second. So, Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Denver.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Valdez. Moving back to item A, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Twenty-Sixteen dash thirty-one, resolution approving the bylaws of the Planning Commissioners. Mr. V. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Corleone, Mr. Ockill, Mr. Houdini. Let me apologize for missing my turn here. I was in the office.
So, Robert, moving fast.
I'll be with a minute.
You worked very hard for Mr. V. Hill. We appreciate your, the need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity. I was going to come before you today to respectfully request approval of Resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirty-one, a resolution approving the amended bylaws of the Taos County Planning Commission. After you had approved the Planning Commission bylaws of the year this year, I determined that Section Eight, Rules of Procedure that are Q needed to be amended to accurately reflect the language in the Land Use Regulations, you have been provided with a copy of the bylaws that depict the existing language along with the recommended changes at a regular meeting of the Planning Commission on three-eleventh, two thousand eleven, excuse me, two thousand sixteen, the Taos County Planning Commission voted to approve the bylaws. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it is my desire that you look favorably on Resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirty-one, and the approval of Resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirty-one be done so today, so that the bylaws can be filed for record as soon as possible. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any other discussion? I have one brief item. I know we're having a hard time getting someone in. Commissioner Gallios says if we need to fill out the resolution, they have form issues from time to time. If somebody is, can we fill it out of another district, or is it, has to come to another district?
Mr. Chairman, I believe the Water and Sanitation Regulations gave each, did, uh, Commissioner appoint someone to this specification.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Denver.
Yes. Okay, moving on to item V, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Twenty-Sixteen thirty-two, a resolution approving the bylaws of the Board of Adjustment.
This is a similar item. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you are correct. Similar item, and what this does, it provides clarification as to who can appeal, and also removes any, any language that references the Board of Adjustment, also addresses subdivision issues which they do not. So, we're respectfully asking that you also look favorably on Resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirty-two. Similar to two thousand sixteen dash thirty-one, it clarifies again who the individuals can appeal to, decision of any quasi judicial matter that has included or performed for the planning process. Having said that, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, respectfully request that you look favorably on two thousand sixteen thirty-two.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any discussion? Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Denver.
Yes. Thank you. All right. Next item is item E, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Twenty-Sixteen dash thirty-five, a resolution imposing an act of alarm tax for the benefit of the Laid-Down Swatch Hills Water and Sanitation District.
Mr. Chairman, I'm on, I'm on the board records for the bylaws summary, if I can vote today or not.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the membership on the board itself, I do not believe would be an actual conflict. I don't think that the actions of the board are in conflict with the county commission by themselves, because it is not an inconsistent office. So, I do not believe it would be a conflict. As a, you know, as a matter of caution, the option would be because you're a part of the quorum to vote in favor of it. You do have through October to vote for this as a county, so if the Commissioners feel more comfortable, they could put this off to another meeting, but I do not myself see an actual conflict.
Thank you. In the past, I have voted for this, and so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just to give a little more background on this, it's simply something that comes up every year. Last year, there was an increase in this act of alarm, but there's nothing increasing this year. We're just carrying over what was done last year, and it's similar to what we did for El Prado Water and Sanitation District back in June. We should have had this on the agenda in June. We're sorry it hasn't been seen before today.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is one of those functions of the county commission that is required by statute. There's not a whole lot of discretion in the county commission when a duly organized water and sanitary sewer association has voted to place this tax upon their members.
Are you okay with that, Commissioner?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'll go ahead and send a motion, Mr. Chairman, for approval.
Okay. I will make the second. Motion and a second. Discussion? Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Denver.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I ask that we have a five-minute break before our next agenda item.
Do you miss Mr. Malone, or, I call him Bobby Bridge, if you ever have those two. Okay, so the next item, Nathan, thank you for being here, but I have a motion, and do I have a second? About five minutes, three and a half minutes. I'll go ahead and second that, too. Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner Omero.
No.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Denver.
Yes. Three and a half minute break. Okay. Can you guys review?
Motion to come back into session, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Denver.
Yes. All right. This, item F, is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding the Approval of Resolution Twenty-Sixteen dash thirty-six, resolution adopting the Community Wildfire Detection Plan for Taos County, calendar year twenty sixteen. This is being presented today by Mr. Nathan Sanchez, our chief planner. Morning, Nathan.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
It's a long time coming, though.
Yeah, well, it started last year, but we were behind. Our present CWPP plan was adopted in two thousand nine. Normally, you want to update these every five years. Most plans, comprehensive plans, they're basically information about certain projects in your county, so we took on the opportunity to update them with our tackle three funds. We hired a contractor, landing clinic, who, the consultant was Ron Gardner. He worked on the project where he, who was a facilitator, bringing back all the court team, bringing the court team members. The court team is a, is a team that was developed through our two thousand nine CWPP plan, which entails all the different agencies, local, state, federal agencies. Actually, if you look on page twelve of the document, we have a list of all the different agencies. So far, we have twenty-three, thirty-three participants. Taos County, the Carsha National Forest, Bureau of Land Management, New Mexico State Forestry, the Natural Resources Conservation Service, TALC, which is Taos Service Center USDA, the New Mexico Association of Conservation District, Taos Soil and Water Conservation District, Taos Quabon Division of Natural Resources Fuels Program, Talon Taos, Village of Questa, Village of Red River, Village of Taoski Valley, and Hound Circle Regional Fire Protection Association, forty municipal fire departments, thirteen volunteer fire departments, all in Taos County, and three COFAX fire department that help provide regional protection. We have New Mexico Department of Garden Fish, Taos County Firewise Communities Recognized, which are El Salto, Guayna Canyon, Vías Convido, Taos Canyon, the town of Taoski Valley, Aspiring. We have the Tier, El Grito, Pop Creek, and San Cristobal that are working on, they're becoming firewise communities. And then we have the New Mexico Forest and Water Sett, Respiration Institute, New Mexico Highland University that also cooperate, UNM Center of the Water and the Environment, New Mexico Wildlife Federation, Rocky Mountain Youth Corps, Taos County Community Foundation, Taoski Valley Incorporated, the Nature Conservancy, Real Grand Water Fund, Taos Trout Unlimited, sorry, Amigos Bravos, Taos Land Trust, Forest Stewart's Deal, El Salto, the Wildland Association, the North Foundation, local forestry contractors, local wood processing businesses, and Kid Carson Electrical Group. This court team has been active. We usually meet regionally, but because of this plan, we had to meet a lot more. We have public meetings, public, someone attended, but mostly as stakeholders that were involved in the development of the plan. The next step is, I will plan on taking the plan to different portions of the county and presenting it to the north and the south, and maybe have some other meetings, or I will be presenting it to the different communities.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to mention Latika Dolkamp, who's in the audience. She was, is from Taos Canyon, and she worked on this plan being presented today, so I just wanted to recognize that she's in the audience.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you for all your hard work. I attended a few of your guys' meetings, and this was a good bunch of people.
So, my request today is to approve Resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirty-six. Also, the next step will be that we send it to the State Forestry for their review by their committee and for their approval.
Okay. I'll go ahead and send a motion, Mr. Chairman, for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I, were we going to get a presentation on this?
For all.
Yes. Yes.
This was, I'll go ahead and second the motion, discussion.
What I could do is put together a PowerPoint. I did.
When I spoke to Nathan, Commissioner, he wanted to get the entire plan to us, get it. We're kind of, we need to get this resolution passed, and so what we can do is you'll have this plan now. You have all hundred and twenty-one pages of it, and then what he can do is make a summary presentation through our, our meeting at a, a future meeting, if that's okay with you. But what he wanted to do was get the plan to us, and, but we need to get this resolution passed.
That's fine. I listened to the impression this was going to be a half-hour presentation today.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell notes that I probably misled you in the presentations intended to be for the mid-year update, but we'll give you a half-hour presentation, not this respective item.
All right, thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second? Clerk Calhoun.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Denver.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I will come back to the formal presentation.
Right, and thanks, we discussed how you're going to get this to us, and this is the better way of giving us a big book and everything out there to save the trees, and thank you for giving it to us. All right. Item G is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding approval of Resolution 2016-37, a resolution suspending the $5 minimum penalty on delinquent property taxes imposing statutory civil penalty for the taxpayer 2016. So you have on the resolution, if you go on the, where now therefore he resolves, pretty much summarizes it there. So any other comments, Mr. Hamil, on this report?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this is something that we've been kind of doing on the yearly, it just kind of formally removes that minimum $5, where we have a lot of issues on the westmest of question states, TP states, et cetera, is we have a lot of non-responsive taxpayers, and that $5 just sits there for years and years and years. I believe that's the reason why we have done this year after you.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second. Third call roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Denver.
Yes. All right. Susan was not able to present, as I said she had. Okay, item 11, permanent matters. Item A is the 2016 planning, Department of Midyear Update, presented by Mr. Edward Reel, our planning director. Once again, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Mr. Corlo, Mr. Hamil. Thank you for the opportunity to come and point today and provide the planning department midyear update. The planning staff is a great group of individuals, and I am very thankful for each and every one of them. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Mr. Corlo, Mr. Hamil, this is Lupe Martinez, who is not present, I believe. I want to thank you for providing the planning department with the funding, the tools, the equipment, vehicles, and training to perform the respective planning department functions. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we'll refer you to the first slide. Let me just make sure I got the clicker. Thank you, Mr. Hamil. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, on this slide, we want, what we are showing for you here is the number of building permits that we have issued through January, from January through June, with a breakdown for each respective month. And I apologize for the colors that I chose, that it's a little illegible, really difficult to read. In January, we issued thirteen building permits. February, we issued eight building permits. March, we issued twenty. And April, we issued twenty-five. And May, we issued thirty-one. And June, thirty-eight. These include and vary from new single-family construction, commercial, and alteration repairs, et cetera. On the sheet, slide number two, represents the building permit percentage for each month from January to June, or based on the slide one for calendar year 2016. Ten percent of the building permits were issued in January, six percent in February, fifteen percent in March, eighteen percent in April, twenty-three percent in May, and twenty-eight percent in June. Obviously, we'll come back with the, for the year-end update or the year-end review of planning problem, I think, change these numbers for you. Slide three represents the total number of building permits issued from January through June for calendar years 2012 through 2016. In 2012, ninety-four building permits were issued. In 2013, one hundred and nineteen. In 2014, one hundred and eight. 2015, one hundred and thirty-three. And 2016, one hundred and thirty-five. 2013 showed an increase of twenty-five building permits from 2012. 2014 showed a slight decline, and 2015 and 2016 are pretty consistent.
This is encouraging, I think, setting those numbers up, because it was really scary back in 2011, '12.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that is correct, and beginning possibly from about 2008 to 2012, our numbers were really, were really slim. The next slide that we have for you is slide four, and what we have here is single-family dwellings for calendar years 2012 through 2016. These are new startups, reconstruction, and we're really pleased with the present numbers. From 2016, we're the numbers for 2012 to 2015 showing the entire year, while 2016 shows January through June. In 2012, there were thirty-eight single-family buildings for the entire year. In 2013, there's fifty-four. In 2014, we have forty-eight. In 2015, we jumped up to sixty-nine. And for the period of January through June, we're at thirty-eight new single-family building permits that have been issued. The number of new single-family building permits has fluctuated between 2012 and 2014, and 2015, whereas 2016 appears to be on track to match or exceed the sixty-nine single-family building permits that were issued in 2015. If we stay on pace to where we've issued the number of building permits for the single-family dwellings of thirty-eight for this year, we'd be on pace to reach seventy-six at the end of the year, and hopefully, we're on that pace. Our next slide for you represents the collective building permit fees for January through June for calendar years 2014 through 2016. You'll notice that between January-June, January is historically the slowest time of the year in terms of building permits, whereas over the past two years, May has shown the busiest time. May of 2015 also represents the month where the largest amount of building permit fees has been collected at $75,552.16, and January of 2015 represents the month where the least amount of building permit fees was collected at $1,904.28. January of 2016 also represents a significant increase from 2015 and 2014, whereas in 2016 for January, the collective building permit fee was $10,083.84. I hope that I didn't really confuse you with this particular slide here. What I'm identifying here are the collective building permit fees for calendar years 2011 through 2016, with the amounts shown on the pie chart, with the exception of 2016 representing the entire year, and the amount shown on the table being for January through June for each respective year. 2014 shows an increase in collective building permit fees of slightly over $60,000 versus 2013. 2015 shows an increase of just less than $75,000 over 2014. Based on the present figures, I anticipate a decrease of a total collective building permit fees from 2016 versus 2015. As a matter of fact, collective building permit fees for January through June of 2016 are $17,731.74, less than last year at this point. The collective building permit fees for the months of July through December are historically lower than the collective building permit fees for January through June. As you all are aware, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we're also responsible for the placement of manufactured homes throughout the county. What we've identified for you here in this chart, in this pie chart, is we've identified for you the placement of manufactured homes at the mid-year point, January through June. You'll notice that in 2014, the mid-year point, we had forty-one individuals of, of post on the Department for Placement of Manufactured Homes. In 2015, we had forty-three, and currently, for January through June, as you say, we had thirty, so we're showing a slight decrease from the previous two years, whereas 2014 and 2015 were very consistent. Next for you, we have the claim of exemptions, and what we've done here is we've identified for you the most popular exemptions that are utilized throughout the county, and I would suspect for the most part throughout the state. These are the lot split, family transfers, and lot line adjustments. And overall, within all the claim of exemptions, there's thirteen respective exemptions to the definite, to the definition of subdivision. What we have for you here is we're showing again the approved lot splits, family transfers, and lot line adjustments. There are thirteen exemptions of, once you get to the definition of subdivision. Lot splits have been fairly consistent over the past three years, and that's the top run. You'll notice that we have figures of twenty-eight, twenty-seven, and twenty-five at the mid-year point. Those are fairly consistent. For family transfers, those have fluctuated. Presently, we're at nine family transfers for this year versus where we're at twenty-two last year and seventeen the previous year in 2014. And in terms of lot line adjustments, we're at eight, fifty, and six. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, some other projects that we are working on in the planning department, obviously, is some grants that Mr. Sanchez has basically taken the lead on, and these grants, and I'm just going to, I'm not going to delve into them too much, but I just want to make reference to them. The first one is the 2015 NFL grant in the amount of $281,550, and the status of this particular grant is presently working with the Taos National Water Conservation District on creating a thinning prescription plan to commence RFP on forty-five acres, and working, excuse me, working with SMU to commence the ten acres of thinning and kind. Under grant number two, we have the 2015 Nature Conservancy Water Fund Grant. This was in an amount of $75,000. The status is for RFP was published in the Taos News on July 38th, plus other Northern New Mexico newspaper outlets for thinning contractors to complete the project. The third grant that we're working under is the New Mexico Finance Authority Local Government Planning Grant, and this is, the project initiation was in April of 2016. Steering Committee working on updating the COM plan and the Local Economic Development Plan, which is our leader plan. The final COM plan and leader plan are scheduled to be finalized in November of 2016. And then lastly, in terms of grants here, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, grant number four is we're also working with the Title III funds for the forest reservation utilization and several, some of that money has been identified for you as to how it's been used. Next, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I also wanted briefly touch on the other planning department projects. In, as you're aware, July 21st of 2016, the Office of the State Engineer, excuse, in just a stream commission, approved the excess Taos Regional Water Plan. And, Mr. Chairman, the Regional Water Plan was initiated in New Mexico in 1987. Its primary purpose being to protect New Mexico water resources and to ensure that each region is prepared to meet the future water demands. There are sixteen water planning regions identified throughout the state. I am pleased to advise that Taos, Taos County, was among the first, second, as a matter of fact, of the sixteen water planning regions to have its plan accepted. Members of the steering committee worked together to identify projects, programs, and policies of greatest interest and passion in implementation for the Taos region. These projects also represent an interest in collaboration with entities in the region as well as other water planning regions to seek funding for and for implementation. Forest health restoration, capacity building for small water systems, and Mutual Domestic Water Consumers Association, and a second capacity and preservation were among the key collaborative projects. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, next, we've identified for you the Trust for Public Plans. Under the Trust for Public Plans, through the Community Conservation Planning and Funding Assessment Project, the Trust for Public Plans will assist the county council in prioritizing and planning for community-directed conservation and recreation, including identifying trail networks and close-to-home recreational opportunities. Conservation Plan was completed in July 2016. Discussion and community assesses on the overall map began acting planning in September 2016. Final overall map and final discussion of the action plan. The trail plan is slated to be a draft in 2016 with field verification, July 2016 with field verification, review, prioritization, and metrics discussion, trail naming, and September is slated to be the 2016 prioritization and implementation planning. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I don't know how many of you were aware of this, but Taos County did partner up with the Taos Public Plans, and we offered $15,000 in a contract to assist with the mapping for footprint, and those products again are underway and should be completed by the end of the year or early part, spring of 2017. In terms of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, the update, as Mr. Sanchez has indicated, has been completed. The completed CWPP update was again before your, this evening, and thank you for passing that, approving that under the resolution, as Mr. Sanchez indicated, goes on to state forestry now for review and final approval. Next, we have the Headwaters Economics, and this is probably something that a lot of you aren't familiar with as well. An assessment of wildfire risk and watershed health in Taos County for providing technical assistance in the form of planning, advice, forestry expertise, and risk assessment mapping. I'm pleased to advise you that through a generous grant from the Lord Foundation, Headwaters Economics, ALOR Foundation chose Taos County as one of five individual case study sites, the others being Austin, Texas, Bend, Oregon, Missoula, Montana, and Wenatchee was Washington, for an assessment of wildfire risk and watershed health. The project proposed by Headwaters Economics will supplement ongoing activities such as recognizing the potential dangers wildfire poses to life and property throughout the county and greater wildfire preparedness, including growth policies, forest and watershed restoration initiatives, and the Community Wildfire Protection Plan 2009 by providing a detailed countywide mapping assessment of wildfire risks to communities and watersheds. The intended outcome, provide Taos County Planning Department with a roadmap to implement future WUI policies and regulations to further reduce community wildfire risk. The following documents were reviewed as part of this process, and those include the Taos County Comprehensive Plan 2004, the Taos County Land Use Regulations Orders 2015-2, the Taos County Subdivision Regulations 2005-8, the Taos County Community Wildfire Protection Plan Update 2016, and the Comprehensive Planning Template and Scopal Work of Taos County. On April 18th, 2016, Kimiko Barrett, who is the project lead of Headwaters Economics in Molly, Maui, owner of the wildfire planning, provided the Taos County Planning Department with a review and recommendations to improve wildfire planning in Taos County. The review and recommendations have been provided to planners, Inc., which is Charlie Dean's, who is hired to update our comprehensive plan and our leader ordinance, has also been provided to the CWPP core team for possible incorporation into the County Comprehensive Plan Update and the Community Wildfire Protection Plan Update. Working on coordinating a date where Headwaters Economics and Wildfire Planning International can provide you the commission for their presentation. All this work was done at no cost to the county, and I'd like to personally thank the Lord Foundation and Headwaters Economics, and, and once again, wildfire planning. And Nathan has also been instrumental in working with these individuals, and I'm also pleased to announce that Headwaters Economics has extended an invitation for Nathan to join them at a presentation in Colorado later this summer. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the planning department does not have a single subdivision application in the mail or in the process right now. I really don't know what to attribute the lack of subdivision applications, but I am pleased to see that they, we are not being overwhelmed with individuals pursuing family transfers and lot splits rather than pursuing subdivisions. In relation to administrative permits, we have two, one that has been approved for, and the other which recently submitted revisions to their application after being deemed complete. For special use permits, we have facilitated six, and there is one major development permit application that is active and will be coming before you in a public hearing in the near future. On June 27th through June 30th, the Region Six Federal Emergency Management Agency Director, Myra Diaz, and Region Six Mitigation Specialist, met with the Taos County Flood Plane Manager, Tim Corner, to visit current flood plane development projects, observe previous development flood plane, and review the county's flood plane development records dating back five years. The purpose of the visit from FEMA is to assist national flood insurance program communities in meeting FEMA's requirements and providing higher standards for flood plane protection. How did we do? There are some minor issues with our older paperwork, some unregulated development and more or less colignous flood planes prior to the mobile home placement permitting becoming effective in 2007. Mr. Corner, our flood plane manager, was praised as doing an outstanding job, and overall, the county was deemed to be in compliance. So I'm pleased to recognize Mr. Corner and Mr. Eric Martinez, who, through your approval, we hired to assist Mr. Corner in the rule addressing and flood plane departments of the planning department. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, in terms of the addressing plan that we've identified for you- Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in terms of the addressing plan that we've identified for you as well, we came before you nearly, I guess, at the early part of this year, myself and Mr. Corner, to advise you of a proposed addressing plan. We are in the early stages of implementation. We hired, as I previously indicated to you, Mr. Eric Montoya, who transferred from the Assessor's Office into the planning department to serve the capacity of GIS Tech Two in early May. We are nearing the completion of the revised update to the rule addressing ordinance. Upon completion, we will send legal for review and approval, and upon review and approval from legal, we'll schedule a public hearing before you, the Board of County Commissioners, for approval of the revised update and the rule addressing ordinance. Mr. Corner will be coming before you at a later meeting for a more comprehensive update of where we are in terms of the rule addressing plan. We also would like to present to you a, uh, uh, report, if you will, on some new imagery that we maybe have, uh, have access to, which is known as LiDAR imagery, and I'll leave that for Mr. Corner when he comes in for his presentation. Once again, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and I am pleased to advise with the approval of Mr. Corner, this is Lupe Martinez, and with the assistance of Mrs. Rebecca Párez Montarone and Mrs. Elsa De Hill, the planning department was able to obtain a new two thousand sixteen four-by-four Clubcat dog pickup to assist with the dated functions of the planning department. This vehicle will also be available for use as a fleet vehicle if needed. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that is basically a brief summary of the update that you have made with the planning department. I stand for any questions, if you have any questions.
Commissioners. Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you so much, Mr. De Hill. It's always a pleasure to hear your reports, and it's excellent to find out what's going on. Did I hear you correctly, Headwaters will be coming before the commission to give us their presentation, because I am really anxious to see the, uh, the mapping.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, that is correct. Mr. Nate and Sanchez have been working with Kimiko Barrett to find a date that will satisfy now and the commission will satisfy their schedules, why?
Do you have any idea when that might be?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, um, right now, um, I don't have the time. Uh, what happened was that they were gonna do a presentation, but it fell on the Association of Accountants for that meeting was canceled. So I was trying to meet that meeting, uh, but that meet, like I said, that meeting was canceled. But as soon as we can, we'll have them come down, and when they're scheduled and they're in compliance with the county commissioners, I'll work with administration to make sure we could get a presentation before.
Is it likely it would be before October?
Uh, yeah, I believe so.
Alright, thank you.
What I think is very exciting about this is in the addressing, I mean, talk about, you know, we're gonna move on, because when Mr. Corner met with us, I don't remember how many months ago, we all identified that, you know, this is something that needs to get fixed. You've got a real good fix going there, and I appreciate hearing about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have made some surprise already, and I also want to indicate that, again, with assistance of Mr. Corner and assistance of Mrs. Martinez, in our early preliminary budget discussions, they have increased some of our budget for, towards rule addressing as well.
Very important project. Commissioners?
Thank you, Edward, Nathan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Okay, moving on to, uh, item B, this is discussion consideration and decision regarding a request for a date and time to hold a public hearing for, uh, major development, zero-zero-one, two thousand sixteen. Mr. De Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, once again, uh, I thank you for the opportunity to come before you. Uh, the purpose of this request, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is to request a public hearing date and time for the consideration before you, the Board of County Commissioners, to hear major development permit, zero-zero-one, two thousand sixteen. This is the application for Glenn Ennis and Michael Tarleton, managing partner of Venture One, excuse me, Venture Nine One L, L, LP, representing the proposed Tarleton Ranch portable keg system. On July thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, the planning commission voted to recommend approval with conditions of the above referenced major development permit application. As per section four point six point six, major development review procedures be as void ten. The Board of County Commissioners review an action within forty-five calendar days after the filing of the written decision of the planning commission. The written decision of the planning commission was filed on July twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen. The major development permit application shall, after proper notice, and in accordance with Article Seven of the Land Use Regulations, be considered by the Board of County Commissioners at the public hearing. Since the decision was filed on July twenty-ninth, forty-nine calendar days would be honored before September twelfth of two thousand sixteen. I anticipate the public hearing to be approximately three hours. And if you would, and if you would like to conduct a site inspection prior to the hearing, that you allow for an additional hour, and therefore, I respectfully recommend that a special meeting be held, that you not, and that you not wait for the full forty-five days to get the application, and that you consider scheduling the hearing for the last week in August or the week of September sixth through September ninth. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you, there's a possibility, uh, Mr. Corner was gonna talk to us in a little bit about moving our regular meeting, Commissioners, from September sixth, since it comes right after a holiday, to the thirtieth of August, which would be pretty much in line, and it gives staff some time, so, um, with that said, um, your recommendation would be either the thirtieth or the thirty-first is what I'm gathering.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that will be correct, but last week, September would be very appropriate. But bear in mind again, I'm also anticipating that this is approximately a three-hour hearing. I don't know how, and which way you have it on your, on your regular agenda if you need a meeting.
If we were to keep the thirtieth agenda without any presentations or anything, just business that is needed, we could probably have a short meeting in the morning, Commissioners, and then flow right into this, if that is the pleasure of the commission.
That's fine.
So what we'll do in planning that meeting, uh, Mr. De Hill will, will not allow any presentations, um...
Finance matters.
Just finance matters, and if you have things, of course, with time, uh, related, you know, any department has any time-related issues or, or anything like that, we'll just schedule those, and then we'll save, uh, presentations and stuff for the September twentieth, if that's okay. Does that date work for you?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, absolutely.
We'd probably need to set the time to begin it. I'm gonna be optimistic, we could say eleven o'clock. Are we between nine and eleven, and then try to start the public hearing at eleven? Is that, is that, are we within our guidelines from the dates and stuff that he suggested? Does that sound good?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, um, as long as notice is done timely for the hearing itself, that sounds fine. I think the only issue will be if you are not finished with your business, and the hearing's ready to go, then you could finish the rest of your hearing after the public hearing. If there are matters, maintaining just a germ and, and let people know that you're picking these up at the close of the public hearing. Uh, I mean, if it's a few minutes, you can finish, but I just think it's important to not start too late after even noticed up the meeting.
And we'd be in department matters, I think, at that time, so we'd only be hopefully putting our staff off, still, I think. Or we'll make sure that anything with the public is way before, so we don't have public waiting for us.
We're scheduled as little as possible.
I'll, I'll work on it, yes, I like that recommendation, thank you. We'll do that. Uh, Mr. O'Donnell.
Oh, Commissioner Vagelos, I know that he's absent. Uh, we, he had already told us that he was gonna be out that week, so, but the rest of the body is here.
I need to ask also, is this, uh, the site of this near the Bell Ridge?
Uh, not, not too close, no. This is, this side is located up at Valencia Road, State Route five-twenty-two north, past the breaking light approximately one point two miles. We turn right down Valencia Road, it'll be, uh, on the west side of Valencia Road, approximately one, uh, half a mile away from State Route five-twenty-two, adjacent to Taus Pedal Track beginning.
Okay, well, the possibility of Commissioner Vagelos, well, I'm, the reason I'm asking this, Eric, this is for you, Mr. O'Donnell. When I was still with, if this is a project dating back some ten years, I probably had opinions and, and, and worked as the fire authority to the area, if that's the same project, I just remember the Tarleton name, so would that exclude me from... But if this is a different project brought by the Tarleton family, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, this would be a different project.
Okay, good, then I'm okay. Because I know that would never went anywhere, I didn't know if they were re-bring, uh, revisiting, re-bringing, I don't know, Taus side, sorry, um, bringing that project back, but then I'm still... We'll have at least four there, that being, do we wanna wait for Commissioner Vagelos? Are you guys in the office, Brett?
Uh, Commissioner Vagelos is in office.
And, Mr. Chairman, once again...
In a, uh, in a memo, yeah.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, you?
Are you going, okay.
But with all respect, uh, I will call you through, Mr. O'Donnell, uh, but again, I think it would be very appropriate, uh, for you to be able to do a site inspection, so you could establish the location this proposed, uh, for the keg site, uh, in terms of relation to residences in the area, so.
And I appreciate that, and I know, um, and I always appreciate this from Commissioner O'Donnell, he reminds us that those are really good ideas, so thank you for bringing that up, I, I'd be up for that. Would you suggest that to be the first hour of the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman.
It's breaking in between the...
I would suggest that we go prior to the hearing commencement, and we do that as the first course of action.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the main thing with, uh, site visits is that they do have to be noticed, that you're not taking action at the site, but there may be a court present. And then it's important to note that at the time of the hearing, that you make your decision based upon evidence introduced at the hearing itself. Uh, that, that, that the site visitor is simply orienting you to the, to the location, that there's no evidence introduced at that time from you or anyone else.
So what I heard you to say is making up our decision later that day based on the testimony in the public hearing and not stuff from before. We need to not entertain any, um, anyone comes to talk to us, we need to not, this is a quasi-judicial setting, and so we do not need to, we cannot entertain any, um, information prior to this public hearing, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct, and I would, as a way to do that, I would listen to the staff guided, guide of the tour and not interact with one party or another who might tag along. Uh, no discussions whatsoever with them, except in the public meeting when they're testifying.
Okay. We're all good with that? If that date works for you, Mr. De Hill, I think I'm seeing nodding of the head consensus. So, so we will formalize that with a motion, which I entertain at this time.
So who, Mr. Chairman?
A second.
Motion in a second for the public hearing to be, uh, held following our meeting on August thirtieth at eleven, Mr. O'Donnell, anything else?
I think that covers it.
Uh, the only thing, uh, Chairman, I have a question for Mr. O'Donnell, is conceivably, the commission can call the public hearing to order and then recess and go on the site tour. Or would you suggest doing the site tour as its own notice requirement? Yeah, and then come back and then call the public hearing to order?
Uh, I think with the planning director, it indicated that it might be good to do the, the, uh, site visit on a date prior to the thirtieth, and that it, it won't be part of the, the, the hearing. It will simply be noted that the commission will be performing the site visit, but no testimony will take place and no evidence will be introduced. It's just a site visit to orient the commission to the site in question. And then the hearing itself will be conducted on the thirtieth.
And my understanding was the, from eleven to twelve would be the time of the site visit, and then we would conclude, I mean, we would continue with the public hearing after that, is that what you guys have?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. O'Donnell, that, my, uh, representation by chairman is correct. That's what I meant to, to convey, that we conduct a site inspection to address Mr. O'Donnell's question. I think, uh, it is, it is very well within your, your, uh, problem, your right, to go ahead and call the meeting to order in terms of the public hearing, recess, while we go do the site inspection, and then come back and call the, you got to order after we've done this inspection.
And that realistically would be probably at one, because we would try to squeeze in a quick lunch.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, and I, I apologize, I know that we have motion a second, but I, I needed some clarification, which is why I went to Mr. De Hill, Mr. O'Donnell.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, in that notice that we go to the site at eleven, similarly to the garage hearing, the public was allowed to go?
Absolutely, and I, and I heard, but thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner. It says we cannot interact, they'll have their opportunity after.
And we may not ask staff questions either, is that, or we may?
Uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, it, it is best to reserve, I mean, if, if the question is, I think the staff would be there to indicate where the site is, and if you don't understand something you're looking at, like, well, what, is that it there or is it over here? That's okay, but don't get into trying to elicit facts about the case until the hearing.
We good? Any other discussion? Let's call it.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. De Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, you briefly alluded to this, and you kind of talked, I think, reserved it more so for the site inspection, but also, which I notice again, that this is an active application, if anybody does approach you, uh, prior to the hearing, please send a moment to me, I'll address the questions that they have.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, we are on item twelve, County Manager Reporting Matters. Item A is an update to this commission on various items affecting Taus County by our manager, Mr. Neira Porter.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, um, you've been very, very busy the past few weeks. Uh, I wanna thank all our department heads, management, elected officials, everybody, Mr. O'Donnell, just for keeping up, I've been really busy, and I just wanna thank staff for all the hard work. Thank you, Mr. De Hill and Mr. Sanchez. Uh, really, I'm just gonna go through some dates today, I don't have a lot to, um, update from our last meeting, so I just wanted to go through some calendar, um, dates. A reminder to the commission that, you know, August fourth, this Thursday, we're gonna be hosting a Taus County Regional Meeting with all of our mayors and administrators. Uh, we've invited Charles de Pico, these pueblos, and, um, of course, commissioners are invited as well, but we wanted to be somewhat relaxed, not as formal, um, discussion. And the items that we will be discussing, uh, first and foremost would be E-nine oh-one Regional Dispatch and the GRT, uh, possible election of the GRT. Mr. Rick Lopez, Director of DFA, will be here for that discussion and to also just kind of give some context on what the state is looking for in terms of regional dispatch. Uh, we have also invited Red River, uh, all of the municipalities that we believe Red River has confirmed, and they will be here, so. Uh, the next topic we'll talk about in that meeting will be countywide economic development and tourism. Uh, Mr. Tim Armour from the New Mexico, Northern New Mexico Economic Development District will be present for some of that discussion now, so we can just have them in the room and hopefully facilitate future, um, work on that. And then the third discussion, or third topic for that meeting will speak, um, then our partners around the county hill at Taus County will be hosting the two thousand seventeen NMC Summer Conference, and just bringing up that discussion in that group, so that we can hopefully get some help and, and just, you know, promote it as early as we can. So that will be this Thursday, nine AM in the chambers. Uh, we're still scheduled for August eighth, our joint meeting with the town of Taus. Uh, we're still solidifying that agenda, but, um, I know what you guys wanna talk about, and so we'll have those topics on there for sure, and then probably a couple of follow-up discussions. Uh, we definitely will talk about, you know, Emilio.
Is that scheduled for nine?
Yes.
Thank you, I was just gonna say.
So we'll schedule it for nine, and I'm, I still need to reach out with Mr. Ellis to finalize that agenda. We're still planning on that. Um, August...
It's supposed to be Albuquerque, but I'm working on getting that changed.
August ninth, uh, we did, we are scheduling the attorney interviews. We did have six candidates, at this time, we have four confirmed. We did have six candidates, at this time, we have four confirmed for interviews. Right now, the schedule looks like it's from 9:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. with a lunch break in there, and we'll have one telephonic interview from New York City. So just giving you a reminder on that, and we are scheduling that, and then probably also be here in the chambers, set up the chambers for those interviews.
And can you do the telephonic via Skype, so we can see the gentleman?
We'll work on that, I don't know if that will be as easy, we do have the speakerphone setup that we have used in other telephonic interviews, we'll try it, I don't, I can't promise that, but we'll definitely give it a shot. And then, as the Chairman mentioned, we have five Tuesdays in August, I was going to suggest, recommend that we do move the September 6 meeting to August 30, it sounds like that has been confirmed, we would make that happen. So then, the next meeting in September will be the September 20, very good meeting, so we'll have a bit of a gap from 30 to the 20. I also just want to let you know, we'll be planning some work studies within all of this, these two months' time as well, so I'll let you know in our next meeting when these work studies will be scheduled, and we'll have some, I know there's a lot of discussion topics that we've been requested of, so we can start getting these work studies scheduled for us, to talk about things like solid waste and public health crisis and those kinds of things, so we'll get those on the calendar. That's all I really have for today, I stand for any questions on anything else that's going on in the county.
I will not be able to attend on Thursday, I will re-attend the NMAC Ford in the Red Oso, Thursday and Friday.
I'll definitely come back to the Commission with a summary of the meeting, how it went, what the discussion sounded like. I really, from my perspective as manager, want to get the buy-in and any discussion out of the way of the 901 tax before I come back to make a final recommendation to the Board, is whether we pursue that for this ballot or not. So that's really the big, big topic of discussion for this Thursday.
Mr. Chairman, do we have an archives dedication tomorrow at U&amp;M?
Right, that's why I had to refer to Mr. Coroner, it's in the Commission chambers, because the facility at U&amp;M Taos is not ready, so it's at 2:00 in the Commission chambers. We've invited the SECA associations throughout the county, we've invited different land grant associations also to attend, as well as Taos, sort of our conservation district.
I may be on route tomorrow, so I may not be able to make it, I don't know if the Commissioners will be able to meet there.
Mr. Chairman, were you able to contact the Santa Barbara land grant and the Los Tronpas to invite them?
We were just given the tenets.
I believe so, we should have said, yes, I believe we descended to Santa Barbara and to the Tronpas, and I think, I also did take an invitation to the land grant up in the Cuesta area, and I also believe, I don't know who was sent to, for most certain, but we were trying to invite them as well.
Well, I think Beverly, I mean, was trying to discuss.
We'll still reject Beverly this afternoon, I've heard.
Thank you. Regarding the joint meeting on Monday, is that 9 to 12?
We're hoping to keep it 9 to 12, we're not going to, we're going to keep it somewhat brief, and on the topics that we decided we needed to talk to them about specifically, a lot of their other requests at the regional, we'll talk about tomorrow, I mean, Thursday in our meeting, so I can hope 9 to 12 max.
Okay, I'm hoping we have things changed, so there's a slight chance. All right, anything else, Commissioner? Thank you, Mr. Coroner, thank you.
Okay, next item is item 13, new business to be considered a future commission duty. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I do believe we're bringing back the YCC, Asequia, and we're bringing back a presentation by Lieutenant Eduardo Martinez, and I would like us to discuss a letter to the Governor in light of the recent tragedies on the bridge. I think this might be the time, we might be able to do something about that bridge. So I would request that we, we talk about a letter to the Governor, what that letter will say, what the contents are, and hopefully we could actually ask our legal to write that letter for us. But I would like the Governor to see our resolution, and I'd like to take our state representative, Bobby Gonzalez, up on his suggestion that we work on statewide legislation for curricula in the statewide, for the Public Education Department on substance abuse and impulse control for the youth, and to start this classroom instruction at an early age, and during the March 29 meeting, that was something Representative Gonzalez said he would do, and all he needs is a letter from the Commission requesting that he develop statewide legislation to address the epidemic the state of New Mexico has with opioid and substance abuse. So there would be two letters, one for the Governor and one for our representative to move forward with legislation, and in addition to that, he could probably help us take the lead to raise the railings on the bridge.
I will not participate in the letter to the Governor about the bridge.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman. We still have to try.
I have.
I'll keep trying for you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners?
I was looking at my calendar, I apologize. I don't have anything else, there are announcements, so Commissioner O'Donnell and myself had a brief discussion after the recent tragedy at the bridge, and there was a story that was done, and it's been picked up nationally, and it's just that it's making waves in the New York Times, but it's not in New Mexico.
What, Mr. Chairman, what date was that? Could you email me a copy of that?
I was told there's something in the New York Times this morning, and I'm going to try to look at it as soon as we're done, that our manager was notified yesterday that it was picked up in Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh, well, Pittsburgh News.
Mr. Chairman, hopefully what this doesn't do is advertise the bridge.
And it's always my favorite, Commissioner, whenever I spout off about it, that's just going to give an idea, but it's just amazing to me that an overpass over, an overpass that's not being used on the Santa Fe bypass has barriers. Every bridge over the interstates from Al Creek to Gallup has barriers. If they can't do it, then they can't do it here. There's been one over there, and there's been dozens here. And I, and that is my fear, Commissioner, and thank you for bringing that up, because we are a suicide destination, we have people that hear about this, and they come from Washington State, Oregon, Nevada, Colorado, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Canada, numerous counties from throughout, from Mexico to predominantly Santa Fe County, Berlio County.
And I understand through our websites also that that promote the bridge, yes, the suicide location or suicide location, it's unfortunate.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for that article, I think it was very appropriate and heartfelt, I'm not going to give up that I see this as the time, unfortunately, but this is the time to address that issue.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other announcements from the Commission? Item 14, and not in record time, we missed that by 32 minutes.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to second, their color.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Chairman Banra.
Yes. Thank you all. Thank you, Francis.